I'd like to call to order the board meeting of Northeast Ohio Regional Soar District for October 21, 2021. May I have roll call, please?
Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mayor Ali.
Here.
President Brown.
Mr. Sulik.
Here.
Mayor DeGea, present.
Mayor Bachi.
Present.
And Ms. Dumas.
Here.
We have before us the approval of the minutes of the October 7 meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President. Second.
Moved by Mayor Bachi, seconded by Mr. Joyce. No objections. Minutes stand as approved. Ask the CEO if anybody in the audience wanted to address the board on any agenda item?
They have not, Mr. Sulik.
Okay, then we will have your report.
Thank you, Mr. Sulik, and good afternoon. Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have four active cases among district employees. This brings us to 108 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 104 folks recovered and returned to work. We have one employee with COVID-like symptoms that is awaiting their test results, and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. We began our opt-in policy on October 18 for those employees interested in the voluntary exception to the face covering requirement, and anyone interested in that exception can contact HR. On Friday, October 15, the Suburban Council of Governments met at EMSC for their final scheduled meeting of 2021. We provided an update on state and federal funding for infrastructure and customer assistance, and in addition, Constance updated folks on an app, a customer service app that we're developing, which will help folks apply for our affordability programs. And then Frank Greenland provided an update on stormwater master planning, community cost share, and the member community infrastructure program. So the COG meets again on January 27, 2022. This week also, October 16 through the 20th, the Water Environment Federation's WEF Tech Conference resumed after being fully virtual in 2020. Several district staff attended, and Kristin Bussier, senior project manager in watershed programs, did a presentation called "One Water Approaches to Regional Stormwater Management in Northeast Ohio," so taking the story to an international audience. Catherine Cristani, our Enterprise Biosolid and Residual Superintendent chaired the WEF Biosolid Subcommittee meeting at the conference, and then I was able to participate with other utility leaders from Chicago, New York City, and DC in a panel on resiliency. So it was great to have WEF Tech back in person again. And then finally, I'm sorry to say that Elizabeth Brooks, our Director of Human Resources, will be leaving us on October 29. Elizabeth joined the district right before the pandemic and actually never attended an in-person board meeting until now, and she has been an essential part of the team. We appreciate her leadership on labor relations, our COVID response, and working closely with Constance Hock to help move HR through restructuring and reorganization. So Elizabeth leaves a great HR team, and we're well positioned to begin our search for the next director. So best of luck to Elizabeth, and also best of luck to Constance. Because she will be moving in, step back in as interim director, and we appreciate that. But again, I do want to recognize Elizabeth. She was with us for a brief period of time, but really a big impact, Mr. Sulik, on the organization.
Okay. That's your report?
That's my report.
Yes, I think the board would also like to recognize Elizabeth for the excellent job she did in restructuring, around the corner there, Elizabeth, HR, and taking over an area that needed some restructuring and work on it, and doing a fine job and leaving it in good hands with Constance now. And we appreciate your work, and good luck in the future for you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to action items. Authorization to advertise. Authorization to public notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 611910 for Baldur Creek stabilization near Abbey Road project with anticipated expenditure of $917,500. Authorization to public notice calling for bids in accordance with the Ohio Revised Section, Chapter 611910 for the purchase of Schneider Electric APC 100 KVA Ultra Interpretive Power Supply UPS. Authorization to public notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 611910 for the district-wide electric repair and easterly service improvements project with anticipated expenditure of $4,100,000. And finally, authorization to public notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 611910 for the Brookside Culvert Repair Project with anticipated expenditure of $11,900,000.
Move to adopt 325-21 through 327-21 and 288-21.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dumas, seconded by Mayor Bachi. Any questions? I just have one on 288-21 on the culvert repair project. We've done some minor repairs to this culvert in the past, and if we could just go into a little detail about the extent of this repair and what benefits that's going to have for that surrounding area.
Mr. Sulik, members of the board. Yes, with this project, we'll be doing a structural rehabilitation of approximately 2,300 feet of failing corrugated metal culvert. So this culvert carries both CSO and stormwater, and as you mentioned, back in 2019, we did do an emergency repair of this culvert, about 100-foot stretch of that culvert. As you can see from the aerial there, the blue line shows where we'll be doing the more extended repair. Again, it's maybe hard to tell from that figure, but where we're doing this repair, that alignment actually runs through the backyards of about 100 residents. So obviously, if there's failure there, there's a high consequence of failure. And then in addition to that, we also have multiple structural defects in this stretch of culvert. So again, a high likelihood of failure, and so that's why we're moving forward with this project. John, if you go to the next slide, please. So just some photos. Those photos there on the left show that culvert, where you can see some of the cracks, and you can also see that there's basically no coverage over this culvert, so not a good situation. The photo there in the middle shows that emergency repair we did back in 2019. And then on the far right there is just an example of the repair that is going to be done to this culvert. It's a shotcrete application, which is basically forming a new culvert inside the old culvert.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, motions are approved.
Resolutions 325 through 327 and 288-21.
Next, authorization to issue requests for qualifications. Authorization to issue a RFQ in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 153, for advanced stormwater planning support for the Advanced Stormwater Project II project. And second, authorization to purchase Cisco Equipment, equipment maintenance services and software license subscriptions from present DO Network Solutions Group, LLC, under the State Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, an amount not to exceed $313,101.75.
Move for adoptions of resolutions 328 and 329-21.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Ali, seconded by...
Joyce.
Mr. Joyce. I was going to say Terry.
Either one.
Mr. Joyce, any questions? If not, the motions carry.
Resolution 328, 329-21.
Okay. Authorization to enter an agreement. Authorization to order the following agreements for 2022: employee benefits. Medical Mutual Life Insurance Company, $750,000 for group life, accidental death, and dismemberment, and short-term disability insurance. Medical Mutual of Ohio, $1,737,100 for the administrative fees and stop-loss coverage. Medical Mutual Services LLC, $13 million for actual claims incurred protection, for a total amount where the agreements not to exceed $15,487,000. And we also have authorization to enter in a three-year professional services agreement with Concentra Inc. for employee occupational health services for a period January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024, for the total amount not to exceed $100,000. And authorization to enter an agreement with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for services and support of community member compliance with the Ohio EPA National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, general permit for municipal separate storm systems, sewer systems, for the years 2022 through 2025, in the yearly amount presented in a total not to exceed
Move to adopt 330-21 through 332-21.
Second. Moved by Ms. Dumas, seconded by Mayor Bachi. Quickly, just on the medical insurance, has that been increases, decreases, or what's been our history over the last year or so because of COVID?
Good afternoon, Mr. Sulik, members of the board. As you may know, we work with Willis Towers Watson Midwest as our insurance brokerage consultant on all our employee benefits. If I could, I'd like to introduce Doug Brown, Director of North American Health and Benefits, to summarize the rationale and the change in our budget year over year.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Doug Brown with Willis Towers Watson. I'm an employee benefits consultant here in Cleveland, Ohio. It's been our privilege to work with you now in our third year. So the process of doing projections for the three components that you just read off, the life and the short-term disability are insurance contracts covering the employees for life, accidental death, and short-term disability. That is a set premium number that fluctuates only by the enrollment changes of the county or the district. So that is projected $750,000 for 2022. The second category in B is the administrative fees that you pay to Medical Mutual, as well as the stop-loss fees. You are entering into the third year of a three-year rate guarantee with Medical Mutual that's a result of the marketing we had done for you back in 2019. The stop-loss, however, increases each year because the risk portrayal of the district changes each year. So we calculate forward what those are. Again, those are set fees per head, and we put a buffer on at 10% under the second bullet to allow for some of that fluctuation in enrollment over time. The specific and aggregate stop-loss renewals have common increases each year of 15% to 20%. That is a large risk element for a large claim, spread over a smaller number of people. Yours came in at 14.5%. Unlike the past couple of years where there was some financial encouragement to take the specific stop-loss, which is a level per claimant, up to a higher level, this year the stop-loss market is more of a hard market, and there was no financial incentive to increase from your current level of $210,000. So overall, this component of your projection, the administration and the stop-loss, is targeted at $1,737 for 2022. More specific to your question is on the next slide, when we talk about the claims themselves. When we forecast claims for the district, we use a 24-month period. We have the current 12, prior 12, and we weight that three-quarters to the current year, 25% to the prior year. That's an actuarial and underwriting approach that tries to level off any kind of unusual spikes or decreases over time. So we use a 24-month period. As we do our annual inflationary trend, the medical, we use 5% annually, drug, 9%, dental, vision, and hearing at 3%. To your question about COVID margin, we have a pretty good segment within that 24-month claim period where a COVID impact hit the district as it did every other employer. It's not just medical, but it's also more significantly into dental and the vision because those are practices that were actually shut down for a good part of 2020. So when we look at our forecasted claims, we've added COVID margins under each line of coverage here. You'll see 4% for the medical, 2% for prescriptions because that did not get as interrupted. People with prescriptions still had a way of getting their drugs filled. The dental and the vision and the hearing were the ones that we took a little bit higher COVID margin on, particularly the vision, because you've had a reduction in vision claims in the most current 12 months versus the prior 12 months. When we factor all of that in, we take those annual trends, and we trend them over a 16-month period, which is the midpoint of the claims experience period to the midpoint of the projection period, kind of like bank interest, projecting out over a future time. We also add a 20% buffer to that, which is consistent to what the district's done in the past in order to set a number not to exceed, so that we don't have to come back and ask you for additional funding. So that buffer's added to that. But then we also, in the next-to-last bullet, reduce that forecast by projected prescription drug rebates, which are returned entirely to the district, and that's projected at $540,000 for 2022. So overall, that results in a claim number in this resolution of $13 million.
Mr. Sulik, can I ask a question?
Ms. Dumas?
When you're doing this, do you have a consideration for the demographics of the group, like older, younger, and also chronic diseases?
Well, the chronic disease totals will be in those claim totals we see on the first bullet. So their claims will be in there. It's not something that will forecast to a spike in chronic diseases. We kind of have your spread over 630 employees that you have, so their claims are baked into that number. Demographics come into play more so when we get into the stop-loss. That gets looked at year to year, and if your age and gender and characteristics go against the actuarial trend, that might have a Medical Mutual want to apply a higher trend. But in this case, we were able to get better than the market range.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then on 330-21, I imagine this is an ongoing commitment we have with the county.
It is. We've had the Cuyahoga County Board of Health under contract for some time. We provide certain services to allow the member communities to meet their obligations under the Phase II stormwater regulations. So the Board of Health handles Minimum Control Measures III and VI, illicit discharge detection elimination, and pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations. The next slide kind of gives you the history, at least through, from 2019 through 21, the current agreement, and where, what we've negotiated and are asking for adoption today. The county has fine-tuned their estimates, their services. The yearly costs actually have gone down for the next period, which is good. Services have increased a little bit, so we're happy with this amount and would like this resolution to move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, motions carry.
Resolution 330 through 332-21.
Next, we have authorization to enter into contract. Authorization to enter into construction contract with Great Lakes Construction Company for the Pearl and Jennings Roads storage tanks and pump station upgrades project in the amount not to exceed $21,711,913.20.
Move to adopt 333-21.
Second. Moved by Mr. Joyce, seconded by Mayor Ali. Just a little explanation, this is part of our court order, isn't it, to do this project?
Mr. Sulik, members of the board. Yes, that's correct. This is Control Measure III of our consent decree, where we will be specifically addressing two CSOs in our Sutherley District. And with this project, we will be controlling about 27 million gallons of CSO. We'll be constructing a 1.1 million gallon underground storage tank. It's 45 feet in diameter, about 110 feet deep. It'll also have its own pumping system, and then a force main that will discharge eventually to another force main associated with our Jennings Road pump station that we're going to rehab as part of this project. We'll also do some rehab of the Jennings pump station itself, and then eventually it'll be pumped to the Big Creek Interceptor during dry weather, and then to our Sutherley plant for full treatment.
Okay. Any questions? If not, the resolution passes?
Resolution 333-21.
Next is authorization to ratify expenditure. Ratification of payment of $10,500 in equipment rental charges to Ohio CAT in excess of the existing $50,000 equipment rental service contract.
Move to adopt 334-21.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dumas, seconded by Mayor Bachi. Any questions? If not, the motion passes.
Resolution 334-21.
And next, we have an authorization to amend resolution. Authorization to amend Resolution 284-21, authorizing the stormwater project cooperation agreement with the city of Shaker Heights to continue district regional sewer water management program funding towards construction costs of the city's emergency partial breach on the Horseshoe Lake Dam, and to increase the total not to exceed the amount of, from $200,000 to $475,000.
Motion to adopt 330, oh, I'm sorry, 284A-21.
Second. Moved by Mr. Joyce, seconded by Mayor Ali. If we just have a little update on this project, because it's going to be pretty expensive down the road, I think.
Okay, the project as a whole, we have released, we've told the board that we had a recommendation to upgrade the Lower Lake Dam and remove the Horseshoe Dam, and then to restore the basin. The request for proposals for the pre-design activity is on the street now. We have asked both communities, Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights, to appoint two members to our selection committee, and we have received the names for their appointees to our selection committee. So this process will roll. The interviews and selection is around the December timeframe, and then we'll come to the board for a resolution to move the pre-design activities forward. This resolution is about the temporary measures, emergency-type measures, to reduce the risk of losing that dam in the interim period. It's going to be a two- to three-year period before actual construction's going to take place. So given the voids and cracks in the dam, Shaker Heights utilized AECOM, an engineering firm, to design a partial, what's called a partial breach, so it's a lowering of a section of the dam to relieve the pressure on that dam. The dam will still fill in wet weather. It's dry most of the time. There's no water in it. So this project will mitigate risk. We want to be involved in funding the construction. We talked about a $200,000 estimate early. That was before their design was complete. We've reviewed their design details. We are in agreement with their design details. This is kind of a step in the direction of full removal of the dam at some point down the road. We've added a little contingency, a little bit more than 10%, just because of the nature of the unknowns here, and we'd like to move forward. This looks like it's a four- to six-week construction period, weather-dependent, of course. So hopefully, in a very short timeframe, we'll get that dam lowered a little bit and be able to mitigate risk going forward. We're going to have to keep our eyes on it. Shaker Heights has what they call a dam tender that goes out every time it rains. Take a look, and we need to keep doing that as the rains occur. We do think this is a good step forward, but we'll remain vigilant and making, to make sure that nothing else crops up in the interim.
Do we have agreement from both communities about removing the dam?
We have an agreement. That's right, I didn't cover that. The Shaker Heights Council on a 6-1 vote voted, you know, affirmative to allow us to move forward with the recommendation. They're in concurrence. Cleveland Heights has hired an independent consultant for a third-party review. We've provided that consultant with a technical memorandum to outline how we got to where we got to, the cost estimates. We've had discussions with that firm, and soon we expect an update will be provided to the Cleveland Heights Council on the findings of that firm's analysis of our work, and we'll see what happens next.
You will keep us informed, then, of any developments on this project?
We will.
Thank you.
Through the, sorry, through the chair, I just want to thank Frank and his team, showing my ignorance and not knowing that area. I asked Frank to kind of show me around, and him and his team, and actually somebody from Shaker were there, and spent a good, over a good hour with me, and really now understanding the magnitude of the issues a little better. So I just want to publicly thank them. And this team. You're welcome. Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
Chair?
Does the change in government in Cleveland Heights have any adverse impact or any impact at all going from city manager to a mayor?
Well, we will see. We will see. You know, we've got to get some nod from Cleveland Heights, and we will see. We're going to remain in contact with them. We expect the briefing, you know, that first briefing from, it's Gannett Fleming is their engineer. Hopefully, we expect that as early as next week, maybe some discussion. We haven't nailed that yet, but this process will continue to move forward. They did put two members on the selection committee, which I think is a good sign, but we still need to work with them.
And Ms. Dumas, I'll just add that obviously Mr. Sarin, Councilman Sarin, has been part of the conversations with Frank and his team, as he's a councilperson now. And then Ms. Danforth has been in many of the meetings, just as a public participant where Frank has presented. So they are aware, I think, of the issues.
Okay. No other objections? The motion carries?
Resolution 284A-21.
Authorization to amend agreement. Authorization to amend agreement number 20006612 with Blue Technology Smart Solutions, LLC, for the Enterprise Content Management Assessment and Implementation Project by adding two additional years of software maintenance for the Highland Software on Vice Enterprise Content Management Solution, and increasing the agreement amount by $60,600, thereby bringing the total agreement amount to not exceed $221,508.8. And authorizing final adjustment change order for Design Built Agreement number 18004634A with Lake Erie Electric, Inc., for easterly and westerly low-voltage equipment replacement project by decreasing the agreement amount by $795,498.15, thereby bringing the total agreement amount to $10,298,743.97.
Move for adoptions of resolutions 335 and 336-21.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Ali, seconded by Mr. Joyce. In discussion? If not, the motions carry.
Resolution 335 and 336-21.
Next, we have authorization of contract modification. Authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 20007515 with DRS Enterprises, Inc., for the CSO Outfall Protection Project by decreasing the contract amount by $39,490.82, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $375,971.53.
Make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Bachi, seconded by Ms. Dumas. Any questions? Not the motion carries?
Resolution 337-21.
We have a bunch of property-related transactions. Authorization to acquire one temporary easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 58108066, located at 8183 Twin Oaks Drive in the city of Broadview Heights, owned by Lisa C. Hawkins, necessary for the construction of the Chippewa Creek Flood Reduction Project near Echo Lane, with a total consideration of $800. Authorization to acquire one parcel and fee simple, known as Permanent Parcel Number 48914034, located at 4812 Oak Ridge Drive in the city of North Royalton, owned by Timothy R. and Pamela S. Barnes. Necessary for the construction and maintenance of the Big Creek Main Branch Master Plan Project Area BCNR02 Project, with the total consideration of $310,000 plus closing costs. plus closing costs. Authorization to acquire one permanent access easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 02323023 located at 13921 Industrial Parkway in the city of Cleveland owned by Fog West 140th Street Industrial Park Company, LLC, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the debris racks and access road improvements at various locations project with the total consideration of $3,850. Next is authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Numbers 4572006 and 4572045 located on East Linden Lane in the city of Parma owned by Jerome LLC, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the Baldwin Creek Relief Culvert at Storm's Drive in Parma Project to a total consideration of $15,550. An authorization to acquire one temporary easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 45718094 located at 7796 East Linden Lane in the city of Parma owned by Linay A.R. and Justin J. Anderson, necessary for the construction of the Baldwin Creek Relief Culvert at Storm's Drive in Parma, project total consideration of $300. An authorization to inquire one temporary easement at the property known as Personal Property Number 02214003 located at 3912 West 130th Street in the city of Cleveland owned by Harry A. Quinones, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the Brookside Culvert Repair Project with a total consideration of $10,000.
So Chairman, move to adopt 338 through 343-21.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Joyce, seconded by Ms. Dumas. Any questions? If not, the motions carry?
Resolution 338 through 343-21.
Okay, and we have one sewer use code matter adopting the findings of the hearing officer in regard to the sewer account of Burton Bell Car Development, Inc., sewer district hearing number 21-004, that the customer's request be denied. Motion?
Move for adoption of resolution 344-21.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Ali, seconded by Mayor Bachi. Discussion? Not the motion carries?
Resolution 344-21.
Okay, I believe that takes care of our action items. I believe we have one information item on the program management.
Good afternoon, Mr. Sulek, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
So this is the monthly update on the capital improvement program for September 2021. With this month's update, I will be highlighting the construction efforts on the southerly building demolition project in addition to my update on cash flow and project level KPIs. So looking first at cash flow, we closed the month of September at 98% of planned. So this is up from the previous month where we were at 85%. I mean, that's obviously a huge jump, and the reason for that is the Shoreline Storage Tunnel. We actually had two pay applications for that project hit this period, so a little bit of an anomaly there. So we do anticipate the cash flow to drop down a little bit, and we do not anticipate exceeding the planned cash flow for 2021. In regards to actual dollars paid out, we paid out approximately $30 million in the month of September, and year-to-date, we're tracking at $121 million. So moving on to our key performance indicators, we had three projects that we completed the design of, all within 60 days of planned meeting the KPI. That was the Brookside Culvert Repair Project, the District-Wide Electrical Repair and Easterly Service Improvements Project, as well as the Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project. We also achieved substantial completion on our southerly electrical infrastructure improvements project. That was within 90 days of planned meeting the KPI. And then we also closed a construction contract for the Westley Steam Grease Handling Boilers Replacement Project. That contract was closed within 95% of the original contract amount meeting the KPI, and we also met our KPI on the business opportunity program goals. The goal on this project was set at 5% MBEWBE, and our projected actual is 6.85%. Looking at the work orders on that project, by change categories as a percent of construction, those came in at 2.74% of the total amount, which equates to about $17,500. As you can see from the pie chart there, the majority fell under the category of design emissions. These were all specific to the startup of some of the electrical equipment on the project. And so with that, I'll move on to our construction highlights, which again is the southerly building demolition project. So the southerly building demolition project is a $17.24 million construction contract. Under this project, we are demoing eight decommissioned facilities. This will eliminate the safety concerns associated with those abandoned processes, and it will also eliminate costs related to maintaining those facilities, and the estimated return on investment is less than 30 years. And then what will be left behind is mainly green space in the areas where these buildings once stood, and were scheduled to achieve substantial completion in March of 2023. So the first building we're looking to demo is the thermal conditioning building. This is actually a partial demo of that building. We have, over the past couple of years, repurposed half of that building, and that's a building that was the operating portion of the facility. And so HR, working with O&amp;M, is using that for ongoing O&amp;M training of their staff. The portion of the building that we're demoing, for those of you that have been around for a while, is the old Zimpro process. That's a high-pressure, high-temperature process that we used to have in place to de-water the sludge before incineration. We also will be doing a full demo of the sludge de-watering building. 20-plus years ago, this was housed the old filter presses, and then that process, or technology, was replaced with centrifuges. We still do use centrifuges in our de-watering process, but those are located in the new ref facilities. So this building will be a full demo. We'll also be demoing the old multiple hearth incineration building, as well as the auxiliary incineration building that was associated with that, that housed the vapor combustion units that clean the air coming off the old incinerators. We also be, we will be demoing the hub or where the old control room was for those old incinerators. Those are actually located in that bridge-like building there, as well as the old steam generation building. A process that was more recently decommissioned was the primary sludge to grit, so this building will also be demoed. At least the main level of the building will be demoed. We will be maintaining the basement level where we still have equipment in there that is in use, including those blowers that are shown there in the far-right photo. And then we'll also be demoing an old pump house that is no longer in use, as well as the labor storage building, again, no longer in use. So I did want to share with you some active construction, targeting those four squares there that are in yellow, but filled in in yellow. The other ones that aren't filled in show the other buildings, but no active demo photos for those. So just some time lapse, like time type photos. Again, that's that old operating hub that I mentioned that feeds into the old auxiliary and incineration building and then wraps around into the de-watering building. So some active photos of that demo going on. And that's the last one of that. I don't know if you can see in that photo the old incinerator sitting there. It looks really small in this photo. And then I just wanted to wrap up. Again, demo, the big demo is, you know, the main part of the, part of this project, but there's a lot of pre-work and post-work that has to be done as part of that. That includes electric demo in a lot of these buildings. We also have a lot of utility relocation, as well as pipe, process piping rerouting that needs to be done for those that ran through these buildings that will no longer be. We also have ash removal that has to take place, that some of the ash that still remained in the old incinerators. And not a surprise, we have some asbestos removal that also had to take place. And then also of note is the radiation scanning that we have to do. I think all of you are aware of the Cobalt 60 that was sent to our plant many, many years ago through the Easterly sludge, through a legal discharge of that Cobalt 60. So as part of this process, we do have to scan a lot of the materials that are being taken off-site so we know where to, where their final resting place will be. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have?
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, through the chair. I just wondered, was anything salvageable there or just so outdated that it wasn't?
So, I mean, that's something we account for in our engineers' estimate. So, you know, the contractor obviously has the ability to salvage some of the equipment, but that's sort of taken into consideration in our estimate in that we would see that return in their bids.
Great, thanks.
Here, any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Got the information. Under open session, I have a report, or the yearly report from the Audit Committee. The purpose of the Audit Committee is to maintain the integrity of the district's financial statements, compliance with legal and regulatory requirements, review the independent auditors' qualifications and independence, and review the performance of the independent auditors and the district's internal audit function. The committee met with the independent auditors who audited the 2,000 financial statements of the district and found no significant problem areas in the district's reporting in the current year audit. Current year's audit was conducted by the state of Ohio. Every 10 years or so, the state has to come in and do the audit where we normally would have an independent firm do the audit. So this was the year the state came in, and they're going to be giving us the option of going outside again to outside auditors. The committee reviewed the internal audit plans and internal audit reports. The committee have found that management and internal audit staff have worked closely in resolving issues highlighted in internal audit reports. And also, Michael Alesska, an independent committee member, notified the district that he is relocating and effective January 31, 2020, 2020 will now no longer be able to participate in the voting members of the Audit Committee. HR is currently conducting a search for the new Audit Committee member. If any board members here would have a potential candidate, please refer to name to, I was going to have Elizabeth, but now I'll have it Constance. That is my report.
Thank you.
Public session, anybody want to speak on any subject matter?
No one has signed up, Mr. Sulek.
Okay, and we have no executive session?
No, sir.
Okay, then entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Vice President.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Bachi, seconded by Ms. Dumas. We are adjourned.